Hi, this is Sean from the Duluth Conservative. This is episode one and hopefully a series of interviews with the candidates for Duluth City Council. I sent out a number of questions to each candidate and have offered a 30 minute discussion on various subjects. Some of the questions are pretty standard, some are questions that you probably won't see in one of the other standard Duluth News Tribune or Legal Women Voter forums. This isn't intended to be a debate, the candidates may or may not align with my viewpoints, and I won't try to argue any points today. I think it's better for people to know as much as possible about every candidate and how they approach issues and offer it in a one-on-one environment that's not strictly timed or is full of edits. If you find this valuable, please let me know. That all being said, let's bring in our first guest, Asher Estrin-Hare, running for Duluth City Council at large. Welcome, Asher. And I want to bring you in here, welcome.
Thank you very much.
Nice to meet you. So I sent out this in an email and I'm going to stick to that format. So the first thing we're going to do is just have you do your elevator conversation, your story of pitching yourself to those people in the city of Duluth. So go ahead.
It's really quick. I'm a Duluth small business owner with a shop in Lakeside. I've been living in and renovating a depressed property in Lincoln Park for the past six years. I've been an activist since I was 17 and I've been a voice for the marginalized for over 40 years.
Is that it?
That's it.
All right, you're right. It's nice and concise. I like that. All right, so I'm going to jump into the questions and the first one is pretty standard. You can take it a bunch of different ways, but who would you represent?
I represent everyone, but while that's important for an at-large position, I especially represent those who are usually left on the outside looking in. The ones without lobbyists particularly. My campaign has not taken a dime in donations since day one because I believe that nobody should have to pay to be heard and have a voice and be represented. When I look at the existing administration though, we're led by a mayor with a private plane, a boat, a very expensive home. And I look at the majority of council members, they've been bankrupt by corporate interests, the wealthy and a utility company. And all of those donors expect something for the money they spend. So it's quite impossible for the marginalized to be taken care of. It's quite the opposite actually.
Very good. What are the top three items you would think that need to be addressed in the next two years?
First and foremost is housing, definitely. I know everybody says housing, but they don't necessarily have a plan for it. The city has made gains in providing more housing and it's resulted mostly in luxury housing. Some short-term rentals, there's a smattering of long-term rentals and some of those have since been converted into boutique hotels, which doesn't help anybody but the tourists. The focus needs to be on converting corporate-owned, single-family homes into affordable owner-occupied homes. And utilize local builders, giving them smooth permitting, timely inspections. Instead of the TIF money and cash incentives that they've just split and then leave us with a nightmare. That's definitely got to go. That way we could grow our tax base without burdening the citizens more than they have been. And as far as luxury homes, wealthy people can afford land and can build on it. So I don't know why we're pretending that trickle-down housing has any place in Duluth. And as far as rentals, we've got to outlaw that algorithm, algorithmic software that decides market rents. You get really odd numbers and it just goes higher and higher and higher. Minneapolis already got rid of it. But it unjustifiably raises costs for non-homeowners to levels that are completely unsustainable. And then next, I would take away the tax breaks that we give to Essentia and Cirrus. They both make stellar profits and those don't translate to larger paychecks for the ones who do the labor that builds those profits. And then use that money for universal childcare regardless of income, because everybody can have children. That'll put more single parents back into the workforce. It'll ease the dependence on social services. And every dollar that you put into universal childcare, you get back $3 into the economy at least. And then finally, it's kind of important to implement a minimum living wage that'll allow those who serve the tourists and the local consumers we count on to be able to live in the same area they work. And all of that depends wholly on growing the city and all those measures still make it possible.
Can I, is it okay if I just pop into a couple of these? I have a couple of questions what you just said. You said convert homes into single-family homes. How would you go about doing that?
Single-family homes that are owned by corporations, those are, they often fall into blight and they're, they're, I don't believe that corporate, this is an unpopular take on some levels, but I don't believe that corporations should own multifamily homes. That's corporate hoarding of those homes has created the housing shortage that we have now. And then sometimes those are split up into multiple apartments and then rented out and then those just get run into the ground. And then we've got a couple of notorious slum lords in Duluth who do that heavily and they brag about it. How they're not going to put a dime into this and they're just going to basically live off of it until the wheels fall off. But then I find that the renters are not getting what they're paying for with corporate homes. But they, those homes would make good starter homes. Like this house, this house was condemned when I bought it. I got it for next to nothing. I'm very fortunate because I had family I could borrow the money from, because nobody would give me a mortgage on a condemned home. Really blessed that way. And I'm on year six of renovating it still while working and living in it. And I think that opportunity should be available to everybody. Because since I bought this house, the rentals on my street are nonexistent. There's owner occupants up and down the street. The pride of ownership is really high and the blight is nonexistent. We just, it's just improved this neighborhood immensely.
You've made a really good argument of why corporations shouldn't have homes, but how do you convert the current corporate homes into private owned homes?
That's not necessarily as easy. And I know there's some municipalities that have done it where they've just made it illegal. So then they're required to then sell those homes. There's corporations who manage homes and I think if we limited the number of homes that an out-of-state owner can have, that's important. Because they're just turning those into short-term rentals or into slums, basically just having some corporation manage them. So there's just got to be some kind of, there's got to be some kind of momentum and incentive to get those homes to be released.
Okay. Yeah, I don't want to belabor the point. I was just curious about what the plan, what you thought the plan was. You also mentioned universal childcare, minimum living wage. Is that something that we would do at a city level or is that more of a state level thing? Are you, so are you proposing that we fund this at the city level?
At the city level. There's a way to do this at the city level, yes.
All right, let's move on. Oh, go ahead. Do you have another thought on that?
Because building the economy, building the economy by having more people in the workforce and the money that goes into the economy. When the least of us does better, everyone does better. And it's just a natural lift. But if, by doing better, like when Essentia does better and Cirrus does better, that's shareholders that do better and not the labor that does better. And that's the real difference because you need the workforces that serve the people to do better.
Sure. I'm not, I'm not trying to argue the point. I'm just trying to figure out how we're going to fund that. And if you thought it was a city-level thing or a state-level thing. So it sounds like you're saying it's a city-level thing.
It's a city-level thing, like Seattle does.
Okay. Okay. What are some things we need to do to get a balanced budget? So I think we're $7 million deficit coming up here in Duluth. What could we do to help with that?
The first step is to avoid mismanaging the funds we have. That $7 million shortfall, it's easily blamed across the board on oversight, but it comes down to misappropriation. DPD, the Duluth Police Department, actually they had a nearly $2 million surplus from their budget. And they petitioned the city to buy a drone to use that extra money. Rather, and nobody was screaming, like if the library had a $2 million overage, they'd say, oh, the library's overfunded. Or if it was Chum or Domiano, like they're overfunded, we need to cut their funding, but nobody wants to cut DPD's funding. But meanwhile, we're all on the hook for that $7 million. And the city council, while they won't consider cutting that DPD budget, they want to cut essential services for the rest of us. So public transportation and the library, those are both on the block. The things that, the things that make a city safe is not necessarily policing. Police respond to crime, they don't prevent it. The thing that prevents crime is when people feel secure. And that seems to be what's missing. When people have food security, housing security, income security, they're, they feel secure. But what we have now is none of that. And we've got the alarm bells going off that Duluth is more and more dangerous and more and more dangerous. And we've got to fund more police. And the police has a pretty big lobbying organization behind it to sort of hammer that home. And the lion's share of the city budget goes to the police department. And they just think, is this really the hotbed of crime that it's made out to be? Because there's no place in this city that I'm afraid to walk at night. But it's, it's just shocking how much money goes specifically to the police. But in order to keep us all scared, then we're just more willing to go along with greenlighting more money to the cops. And it's making us less safe overall.
All right, those are the easy questions. Now let's have the fun questions.
Oh, good.
We'll go through the rest of the list here, just like I said. So the right to repair ordinance, can you give me some thoughts for or against and why?
Oh, absolutely.
Let me set this up. So if people don't know, there's an ordinance coming up on the vote, coming up on November 4th. It's going to be a right-to-repair bill saying that if you were renting from a property owner and you have an issue with your property, you submit the problem to landlord. They have up to two weeks to either have somebody scheduled or having addressed the issue. And this could be just about anything that you find wrong with the property. And if you find something wrong and you schedule somebody to come in, if they haven't taken care of it two weeks, you can then have somebody come in, it has to be a professional, and then they can charge up to $500 or they take up to $500 off their rent for that month if, to cover the cost of that. Is that pretty much a fair assessment of that?
$500 or half the monthly rent.
Whichever, okay.
Whichever is greater. I think it's whichever is greater.
Up to, is it up to $500 or is it if you're paying $5,000 rent, it's $2,500?
That's an odd sticking point. I think it is which is greater, but I'll have to check on that. So don't hold me to it.
Not important. People can do the research, but I just wanted to tell, I wanted to tell people what it was before we talked about it. So now go ahead and, and give your thoughts on that.
I'm absolutely for it. Before I bought this house, which was more my father telling me, it's like you live in a shithole, they're not fixing anything. And why don't you just buy your own dump and fix it up, which is how I ended up in this dump, which is not a dump now. It's very, really quite nice. I had a landlord who was either not around, we'd gone without heat, we had gone without water, we had had water coming through the ceiling from that apartment upstairs. We'd had contractors working outside and they were sawing some siding off the house. And they had a huge blade coming into the apartment, just zinging through the laundry room. It was just awful. And when something would break and I would call him, he would just either ignore it or wouldn't be home. So we would end up having to, I would either have to go down into the crawl space under the house and deal with the furnace myself or the water heater myself. Or I would have to just be an amateur plumber and figure out why is this leaking and how can I fix this? But I replaced a faucet and there was a clogged tub that I ended up dealing with myself. And it was more than drainage. It was, it was pretty intense. And all of those things just add up. And then he wouldn't take things like that off the rent. He would say, who are you to tell me how to spend my money? And I just find that abrasive and reprehensible. So if, if a landlord can't fix something in two weeks and the tenant has to do it, that's going to free up time in the court system. Because the only other alternative that tenants have is to go to court or place their rent money in an escrow account. And I can't tell you how many, how many renters don't even know how to place money in an escrow account or even know that that's a right they have. So that's, it's a very available to, will be, because I believe this will pass. It's a very available tool for the tenants to finally have some power and some control over their surroundings instead of just leaving it up to a landlord who pretty much believes they're bulletproof and a lot of them do.
What are, do you know the arguments against the bill for the ordinance?
People have said the apartment will end up getting shoddy work, which isn't true. Because they think, they believe that the tenant will be doing that work themselves, which they're not.
Right, right.
Yeah. They'll believe that the landlord won't be able to afford it. And then they're going to have to sell. And when they sell, then somebody will buy the building and then raise the rents, which is ridiculous. It's sort of in that whole, oh, won't someone think of the landlords? Landlord-ing is not a career. It is, it's like a hedge fund. But turning it into a career is really just sleazy. You're taking a basic human need and monetizing it to an outrageous amount. And when your costs don't go up, but the rental costs go up for your tenants, that's disgusting.
One of the things I heard about was that if a tenant does repairs on their property and something goes wrong and it is, either it is shoddy or it causes damage, they could be liable for that damage into the thousands of dollars.
Oh, yes, absolutely. But that's not part of the ordinance. The ordinance is that they're to hire somebody to do the work.
Correct. But if they do a bad, even if that company does a bad job, you as the renter, having hired that out or taken that on yourself, you are liable for the property and changes to it.
So, oh no, that contractor is liable.
Okay. All right, I want to go on. Recent city council vote to increase the mayor's proposal of a 4.1 max property levy to a 5.13%. What are your thoughts on that?
I'm not for an increase in property taxes, but when I was at that meeting, I see why they did it. They did it in order to have the wiggle room. It was a just-in-case, so ideally it would result in not cutting funding for essential services. But at the same time, they say, we're going to, we're going to try to stay on the 4.1% side, but we need the 5.13 as wiggle room in case we go over. And I'm actually quite opposed to a 4.1 levy as well. I think that the increases in property taxes are unjust in a lot of ways. That year after year, they just go up and up. And I think growing the tax base by building more homes is the answer to filling the city coffers rather than relying on existing citizens to just get priced out of their homes, which they bought to have some sense of security. I think that that's more important, but I can see how the vote happened. I get why they did it. I'm not exactly for it, no.
Okay. The data, so one of the things I was proposing is we investigate in Duluth, the idea of an AI center or data center. Because we have a location for it, we would need to figure out the power, we would need to figure out how the water is, if it's going to be clean when it comes in and out. But Duluth isn't in that conversation because now Herman Town has, it looks like they're going to get a data center. What were, what are your thoughts about Duluth entertaining the idea of a data center?
I believe that Duluth knew that that was not going to fly here, but even having it in Herman Town is going to require Minnesota power. So when BlackRock, when that transfer of Minnesota power, they approved that transfer that BlackRock would be a partial owner in Minnesota Power. BlackRock is also partnered with Nvidia, which is that AI chip, that AI company. And they're in the process of building data centers, which was the whole reason that Minnesota Power then funded their employee Eric Forsman's campaign. So that that could be, that transfer could be greenlit. And Forsman was at the meeting last night, speaking out in favor of the data center. And he's apparently already been in talks about Herman Town having access to the water that then has to go through Duluth to get to Herman Town. So this is a fix that's gone in for a very long time. And it's, it's going to be noise pollution, it's going to be pollution pollution, water pollution. You're going to have lower water pressure, you're going to have brownouts, intermittent brownouts. Where these data centers have gone in have just created havoc and hell for the residents around them. It's going to lower so many property values. It's tragic. What's, what's going to happen to the watershed is a nightmare. It's really gonna, it's going to destroy what people really love about living here.
So I don't want to put words in your mouth, but basically the question is, would you entertain an idea of somebody coming in and doing an RFP for a data center here in Duluth? I don't want to say that you're saying against it or for it. I just want to find out what would your thoughts be on that?
Oh, I'm 100% against it. And in fact, there was never an environmental impact study done for this one. In fact, a lot of development in Duluth has not had environmental impact studies done. And they've greenlit things that are really, really bad for the environment and for existing homes.
What if I said, what if I said they're going to come in and they're going to do, as opposed to a behind-the-scenes, you know, you know, signing documents saying you can't say in non-disclosure agreements. They're going to come to us and they're going to say, here's what we propose and we will answer the questions for what is the water pollution? What is the energy need? What is the noise level? Where are we going to put it? And they're going to answer those questions and then we have a public debate. Would you say we just shouldn't do that or that would be okay as long as it was done above board and in front of everybody?
If it was done with complete transparency, but I don't believe anything in Duluth has been done with complete transparency in, not in my lifetime.
Well, there's, there's the, what we want and what we have. So yeah, I just wanted to know. What I'd like to do is bounce it off people to find out if they just don't want to have it at all or if they are willing to open it up. So that was the basis of that question. So I think you.
Oh, I'll listen to anybody, but yeah, I'll listen to anybody, but I've never heard a reason for it. It's just a no-go.
Kind of moving on, then there's a Leicester Park Golf Course proposal. Have you heard about this?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Okay, so let me do the base work again for the people that are listening that may not know about it. There is a proposal to, on the east end of town and Lakeside, there's a 27-hole golf course called Leicester Park Golf Course. That used to be a city-owned golf course. And there is, that is closed down a couple of years ago now and the land is sitting there. There is a developer that came in and said, and they've been doing this for about 10 years. They wanted to do it before it closed. They want to buy the property, they want to get rid of nine holes, keep 18, put a hotel on it, restaurants, and then mixed housing. So upper to lower housing on that property. That was proposed to the city council. I think they're possibly moving forward still with it. But what are your thoughts about the Leicester Park Golf Course proposal?
The planning commission couldn't hold a vote on the property transfer because there were only six members present and they needed a three-quarter majority to approve it. And I was at that meeting as well because I was trying to stop a short-term rental permit from going in right by my house. Which I wrote letters about, I wrote letters to, telling the planning commission, here's why you don't want to do this. And there's a housing shortage and all that stuff. And sent that in and nobody got them. They went to Samantha Smith and then she gave them to somebody else who then, I guess, just shredded them or something. Because nobody on the planning commission said they even saw them. But at that meeting, so many people came out to talk against it, saying the city owns it, so it should stay a golf course. And the problem with it, I believe, is that it wasn't profitable. And there was some issues about profitability because they didn't have a, it was dry. It was a dry part of the city and they couldn't have a bar there or whatever. And golfers love to drink. And I don't play golf, but I do like to drink. So I can see why some of that has, is, there are people that just don't like change. But the truth is, we do need, we do need housing. I don't believe that we need a private golf club. I don't believe that we need a private golf course there. And it does sound like what they were planning was the housing to be around a golf course that was, you know, basically for their use. And I don't think that.
They, they were allowing it to be open for the public and their private use, but they would own and operate it.
Because I just, I don't know that, I don't know just how popular that would be. But I know that, hotel aside, I know that the housing is necessary. And there's, are you familiar with Lennar, the home builder? They're the largest home builder in the state. And they wanted to come here and they wanted to build on the incline property. And they were looking into building on the Leicester Park property. And they didn't want TIF money, they didn't want tax abatements, they didn't want cash incentives, nothing like that. It was just all permitting and inspections. That's what they wanted. And they wanted to work with the city and say, what balance of housing do you want? We can do low income, we can do rentals, we can do middle-class homes, we can do big houses, we can do starter homes. And it, they contacted the mayor's office who just basically ignored them and didn't want to work with them. Instead said, oh, we're happy to work with Osterich again, even after he went bankrupt. The mayor's still willing to work with him on the incline property, which is because he owns it still. Not the mayor, but the developers still own that property. And I don't want to get into that kind of a, that kind of a situation in Leicester Park. So that, that kind of development, it needs to be with a local developer that's familiar with how that area of town is and what it needs and what'll make it thrive and how it's growing. That kind of information, like an out-of-state developer will just come in and start something, likely not finish it and then just split. And then the city will say, oh, well, we didn't know and we operated in good faith and at least we didn't give them the money. Which is what they're saying to the incline property. We didn't, it didn't cost you anything, but the city did tear down that high school and grade all that property and we paid for it. So they can't say this isn't costing us any money. So for that nightmare to happen, and then now they're talking about doing that at Leicester, I really seriously have my doubts. If they're going to transfer that property, it really needs to be developed by an in-state, an in-state builder.
And there has to be guarantees in it to make sure that if the property isn't developed, it reverts back to the city probably.
Absolutely. Oh, yeah, that, the Duluth Economic Development Authority, when they transferred, they transferred a building on my corner that was owned by, oh, what's the guy? I can't stand him, Ringsrad. It was like falling apart and he just lets things go derelict. So this place is full of hot mold and pigeons and squatters and rodents and everything. The windows were falling out of it. And then they said, we're going to, we need to change the zoning to historic, which means it can't be torn down. So I went and talked against that because I'm all for that building being torn down. But I got railroaded on that one too. Then they, Deta sold it to Sundberg, who's one of the basement-y people. And they said that it would, work would be, work would be noticeably done on it within a year. That was a year ago, last April. And it, it looks no different. it within a year. That was a year ago, last April. And it, it looks no different than it did then. It's still horrible. And now it's got a historic designation. So.
Oh, great.
Doing that to a huge, huge golf course is even worse. I, I just can't imagine. So there, there really needs to be.
There would have to be.
An applicable lawyer going through it.
So what I'm hearing is you're not opposed to it, but you would think there'd be a lot of conditions about it that you'd have to, they'd have to check a lot of boxes before you'd be for it, but you're not against it.
I'm not against it.
You're not outright for it or outright against it?
I'm outright against the current administration having anything to do with it because whatever they do is going to be a nightmare.
Which is why you want to be part of the current administration to change things.
Exactly. I'll speak truth to power. I have no idols.
All right. I'm going to go on to the next three. We're going to pop through these a little bit. Recently, there was a resolution on LGBTQ rights and the city producing a directory of businesses that were LGBTQ owned. What are your thoughts about the city government picking businesses to support with such a, such a directory?
If it's a commission specifically assigned to it, that's one thing. If it's the city itself, that's quite another. And, and there's very few businesses I can imagine in Duluth that aren't LGBTQ friendly. I can only think of two off the top of my head.
It's not the ones that are friendly, it's the ones that are owned. So they're actually putting a directory out of LGBTQ owned businesses. I have my own thoughts on this, but I want to find out your thoughts too.
There's, there are LGBTQ groups that can do that on their own. I don't think the city needs to do that. I have a gay-owned business and I generally try to keep the city out of my business.
Fair enough. I think we agree on that then.
Maybe I am conservative.
Well, maybe you are. Yeah, my thought is that it doesn't matter who it is, the city should not be picking winners and losers and helping out particular businesses. They should be in the business of helping all Duluth businesses. That's who they should be supporting. That's my, my opinion.
Absolutely.
The city council and mayoral candidates are all theoretically nonpartisan candidates, but many of them receive endorsements from major political parties, most of them being the DFL, but it's not unheard of for a Republican to get a Republican endorsement. What are your thoughts about political parties endorsing nonpartisan candidates?
It's, it's entirely misleading. I find the DFL to be incredibly conservative. I find the, the DFL, as it is right now, it's, it's fairly toxic, but I, I find them to be sort of, if I imagine the Reagan era, they're kind of right of that. And it's not, it's not as left-leaning as people think. So if a, a DFL endorsement really means nothing to me, other than that they were willing to play the game. It's, it's lip service. So if you tell a political party, yes, I'm going to cosign all of your, oh, let's see, let's try not to put this the way I would normally put, I'll put it that way anyway. This isn't television. So it's, it's like, I'm willing to cosign your bullshit and you just push me to the finish line. And I, I find that reprehensible. You'll have one party who says, I'm willing to screw these people over, but I'm willing to support these people. And it, it's just dirty. And the whole nonpartisan, the whole idea of being nonpartisan is, is that everybody has, everybody's being represented. But what's happening is, it's, it's picking favorites. It's picking favorites and we're going to play to this audience. And then a lot of times they will flip-flop. So I know, what's his name, Therese Timonik, she's been, she's been endorsed by the DFL and she will take a couple of left-wing bullet points that she puts on her literature that she sends out, but then she votes the exact opposite. So I don't think that criminalizing homelessness was necessarily a DFL position. And if it was, it shouldn't have been. In fact, I don't even think that that's even a problem. The homelessness is not a problem. It's a symptom of a problem. So when you criminalize a symptom, that's an incredibly, very, very, very right-wing thing to do, like insanely militant right-wing thing to do. Not even conservative. It's just hateful.
So one of the things that came with this is that, I, I think you kind of hit it too. If you're DFL endorsed, you expect that candidate to vote certain ways. And in a nonpartisan race, you shouldn't have that expectation. You should have the candidates expressing what they're going to do and not be disappointed if they do things that they, you should be disappointed if they do things they say they're not going to. But.
Oh, absolutely.
But having a DFL tag on it in Duluth is, you could almost put a DFL tag on a chicken and they can win an election. It's not the same in other places. And it'd be the same thing there. If they had a Republican, if you had a DFL flag, you may never get elected. But the whole point of this was, we're supposed to have nonpartisan races. A lot of people are endorsed, you know, what is that a good thing? And I don't, I think you're saying it's not. I don't think it's a good thing to be endorsed by the party, nonpartisan race.
Because we're led to believe that we can go speak to the city, we can go to a city council meeting, we can air our views. And if it's overwhelmingly in one direction and the city council votes overwhelmingly in the other direction, you know, they never listen to you. Their minds were made up beforehand. It happened last night. It happened with the encampment vote. It happens with every vote. And so we keep showing up and we keep speaking, even though we still know they're going to do what they're going to do and they're not going to listen to one of us. And that time I had to call them out for not listening to me while I was speaking, that was just ridiculous. That went a little bit viral, which, this is, I don't know what you hear when I speak, if it's dolphin clicks or some banter, or dolphin squeals or banter clicking language, but.
Clicks and pops, baby. Clicks and pops. That's all.
They were just on their phones or whispering to each other or.
All right. Let's, let's wrap it up because I got a last question. I know you have stuff to do because you actually work for a living.
I do.
There was recently a decision, I added, I wrote this right after they did this. The city, I don't want to call him the engineer, the city manager, made a decision to remove the city council at duluthmin.gov. They, those emails were all open to the public and sent out to the Duluth News Tribune and different media groups. And he put a kibosh on all that stuff. What are your thoughts about that? What are your thoughts about that decision to remove that? And, and his argument was, people have the right to assume that their correspondence with the city councillors is private. That's the whole reason he did it. So what were your thoughts about that?
When you go to the, when you go to the city website to get that address, all it takes is just a line there saying, this is public. If you're sending something to a council address, just like if you're sending something to the planning commission, it goes to planning@duluthmin.gov. And the council address was always council@duluthmin.gov. And there's no transparency on the planning commission. And now there's no transparency on the council email either, because that would go to media, that would go to people that were signed up for that email alert. And, but that was the only way to reach all the councillors at once. And so now you can, you can email them all individually, but who's really going to take that time? It's, getting involved in government is a chore for a lot of people. And even so much as typing more than one email address, that's going to silence a lot of people. It, it.
Sure.
It's, if, when you remove transparency, there's a reason. You're hiding something. That it's, it's always that way. Signing an NDA, that was not about trade secrets. That's, that's about, I don't want anybody to know this is happening. And, and to just take that away. It's like, I don't want anybody to know that there's actual opposition to this. Or I don't want anybody to know that anyone thinks this way. Or it just doesn't make any sense.
Yeah. Okay. You know, the funny thing is, well, it's not funny. You and I agree on a lot of points. We disagree on some points, but we agree on a lot of points. And that's why we have these conversations to kind of rattle these things out. So.
Absolutely. I hope somebody else does this too, but it doesn't sound like they will. I hope they would.
It's been an interesting response cycle I've been getting. So I've done with my questions, those ones I sent you. We don't have any viewers on right now live, so I don't have any questions for you from them. So go ahead and do your final pitch and we'll just wrap it up.
I've said my whole campaign, I don't need, I don't need a dollar from anyone. I am happy to talk to anyone. I'm happy to listen to anyone. And you don't have to like what I say. You don't even have to vote for me, but you do have to vote. You deserve better and what you think matters. Thanks.
All right. Well, Asher, it was great talking to you. I had a good time. I wish you all the luck and good luck with your campaign and, and your house.
Yes.
Keep working on it. All right. Thank you, Asher.
Thank you so much.